Hi Hugh. Okay. So I guess the idea was for me to to talk about you and Sarah. And they are teaching the yoga program with TWIM, which is something actually that we used to talk about in Seattle with some people that were working with yoga. And they were discovering that if you are using the TWIM steps in conjunction with yoga, you can often go into a deeper position, sometimes as much as three or four inches deeper into a position when you're doing a series in yoga. And I think you and Sarah have figured this out and worked together with this. So I'm really excited to see this today. And there's a little more here. Let's see. What happened? Well, I know you told me about this. I'm trying to find where it is. I didn't go back far enough. Wait just a second. Oh, I, well, no, this is where it is. It's Cinder, Dawn, and Kevan Basie. Anyway, they're going to tell us all about this program they have with yoga. And I have talked some to you before about this. It's a very special program. And what we are trying to do is to help to raise some money for Bhante's traveling expenses. And I don't know if you all know it or not, but he has basically got a plan. And we have a ticket for him to go back to the United States. But there is a little bit of concern about how to get him to where he can get on the plane and how that will work. And so day to day, I get reports from Mumbai and the seriousness of the situation. And I was telling some Americans this morning. They are actually really lucky with everything that's going on there. I know there are problems, but the way that they were able to handle the COVID is much better equipped in some ways than what's happening here. Because in Mumbai, for instance, I was told last week, they were very close to running out of beds. And in India, it's not as easy for them to just simply have a hospital ship show up with thousands of beds and to have everything, you know, happen in the affluent, as did in an affluent country. And also, I don't think people realize, in the United States, there were 340 million people altogether. But when you are talking about this happening in India, I can't get my head around 1.43 billion people. That's, it's a big number and I can do six zeros with millions, but it's hard for me to fathom how small the United States population is in relationship to this and the vast difference in income and structure. And I've been around India visiting. When I tried to write it, I realized, you know, I've visited people in shacks in the agricultural community and then in mud huts and in tents and then in little villages that are made out of bamboo in Tripura. And then going to towns and cities that are very tiny. And we don't have any idea in the West about this. We don't understand. So it's a really big deal what's happening here.
Kema, I think we can allow you to start now. It is seven.
So we're kind of starting, but it's a real interesting thing. Because now, can you tell me the date that you sent that to me? Because for some reason, I can't put my finger on it.
Okay, I'll send it to you now.
Yeah, that would be good. Okay. I thought I had it right on my fingertips and it's like it just went away. Okay. Oh, that's good to do it that way. That's very nice. Okay. Only it won't turn. I got that part. So it's all right. So this is, this meeting is about being introduced to the form of yoga that Hugh Poulton and Sarah Hayden have put together. And Hugh Poulton is, Hugh is basically a very long-term student of Bhante Vimalaramsi. I remember you in the very beginning. It was a long time ago at Damasuka. And he's practiced yoga and mindfulness for over 40 years and has taught for the last 25 years. And his work is referenced in Mark Williams' bestselling book, Mindfulness: Finding Peace in a Frantic World. And he's done a really great job. He is joined by his wife, Sarah Hayden, who is also a student of Bhante's and has been teaching Sukita yoga with you for the last six years. And Hugh is a senior yoga teacher with the Yoga Alliance in the UK. So they're growing and getting a lot of people to come into this. And the unique style of Sukita is teaching has won admiration internationally for its direct and relevant self-referential approach. And this is a weaving of yoga together with the steps that I think are used in the right effort. Yeah? And so you have the relaxed step involved with this and you have the smile as you're doing this. So I'm going to turn this over to you. I'm really happy to be here. I'm happy to be able to be with you. And we're hoping to, to, this was their suggestion, to try to help to raise some money to help with the, with the expenses for Bhante to go back to the United States, where he has got a couple of retreats to do in the coming months there. So we're all excited about this. Hi Hugh, how are you? Hello.
Oh, thank you. So, thank you very much Sister Kema and Andy Dhammukhavasi for the introduction. And we're really delighted to have this opportunity to share what we teach with you. And we have a big screen up so we can see people, but most of you have got your video off. So that might be because you're saving bandwidth, but it does mean that we can't interact a little bit with you. So if you have it up the video on, then please, please do that. Okay, good. Now, we'll be taking you through a number of sort of movements, warm-ups and yoga movements. If you've got any injuries or any conditions in your body that you feel are in any way restrictive or you want to avoid injury or whatever you're dealing with, then just listen to your body. Don't just take what we say to do and don't think or listen to your body. Listen to your body. Don't push into tension. Certainly don't push into pain. I think, or I hope, after an hour together, you will appreciate that what we're doing here is really developing a style of yoga, which is taking all of the tension out of the practice. And so we're looking for a style of yoga which is free, open, released, soft, very light. And the consequence of that is that it becomes very sensitive to what's going on in our mind. And so our body becomes a reflection of our mental state. And that's really, really helpful. And it's particularly helpful when we take this practice off the mat into daily life, because we're continuing to move in daily life. And this, this integration of the practice into body movement, which is the thing, I think, which is the most interesting and exciting thing about this practice. Because we get this early warning system through our body about what's happening with our mind at times, particularly in daily life, where we may not see those conscious movements. So it's a tuning in to what are the language of our body and integrating the teaching of TWIM into this practice. So that it's like if you like an extension of your sitting practice in movement, but we also have the benefit of a movement practice for keeping the body healthy, fit, subtle, and able to sustain longer periods of meditation as we require without a sense of strain and discomfort. So to start this, I would like to just hand over to Sarah, because Sarah came to this before she came to Bhante's teaching. And so she came in from the yoga side. And, you know, her description of that and then subsequently coming into Bhante's teaching, I think it's very helpful. So Sarah, perhaps you'd like to say a few words.
Okay, so one of the aspects that I found really helpful beginning a movement practice with yoga is it helped me reconnect with my body initially. There were whole aspects of my embodied self, if you like, that I was very disconnected with. And so there was a gradual improvement in my sense of, not just physical well-being. Maybe someone might have a...
Just place yourself on mute. Yes.
Yeah, yeah. So the yoga that I began really helped me develop a kind of relationship with my physical home. I think that's the first step. And the disconnection that I had was really quite extreme. And the tension that I found was really quite gross. And then things began to shift and evolve. So that I began to be aware of more of the mental connections in the physical body and the subtle tensions that were still in my body and still in my mind. And so it's become a process of cleaning and refining the way everything connects together. And like you say, this comes right out into your, your daily life. Because we're always in this physical home. It's moving with us all of the time. All our relationships, all our interactions. And sometimes, certainly in my case, I don't have the skill to catch that jump that I do into unskilled form response. But the listening, I don't always have the skill to do it through my body, but the listening the yoga has given me, sometimes I'm able to feel the sense of heat that's coming around, a bit of anger that's going to break through. Not always. It gives you an embodied roadmap about how to catch the movements of your mind. So it's like, like Hugh says, it's your early, early radar warning system for things kicking off. So that's very good. But the other, the other aspect about it, which I think really, really came home to me when I, I started a greater depth of meditation with Sister Kema and then Bhante Om tree, is this understanding of more subtle awareness and an experience of greater space in the mind and an experience of balance in the mind. And those are some of the qualities that I started to feel through the physical yoga practice. But to refine from it being gross physical form moving into something that was starting to feel much lighter, much more imbalanced, much more fluid, much more spacious. Similar qualities, not the same, but similar to what the meditation experience can, can create. So it's a really interesting, it's not just parallel, it's a really interesting synthesis. And from, from the journey that I took through the physical body into something more energetic and then mental, it's like the whole, the whole thing, the whole teaching is confirmed whichever way you look at it. And so the expansion, just purely in terms of a physical movement practice, there are moments when your body disappears. It's extraordinary. And, and you know, some, some of the most traumatic moments, and we're not, definitely not doing these with you today, but something Hugh and I sometimes call a handstand mind. When you are really, really able to refine your awareness simply to the touch of your hands and simply to an internal energetic support, using the TWIM relaxed, released mind, your body disappears. And so you have an embodied outward presentation, a floating handstand, and then boom, you come back in and down your legs come. And it's really extraordinary, because you can't say that you controlled or owned that movement. Yet something was going, something happened, something, and it's a wow moment in, in the yoga. So that's just a, I guess, an example of how, how our refining awareness changes experience. It's completely radical and it's completely transformative, transformatively. And the, the other thing that's coming, that's coming through, I want to mention, is around how, how it's such a healing practice. And, you know, I, I, yeah, I really, really am very grateful for this, this path that's enabled me to start to heal aspects of myself, which have been very out of balance. And what, one, one thing actually I can, I can tell you about, which is very extraordinary how tension seems to consolidate and become more and more dense in the body until it's like running its own program. So this, this has been something I've had a lot of in, in a, in my right hip. And the physicality of that has been very intense over a period of years. Working with the loving kindness, using what we, something Hugh's going to talk to you more about in a minute, but our awareness of an inner landscape and an energetic support has enabled me to have a different relationship with something quite acute. And what I've experienced through that is changing properties in the body. So it hasn't remained as a confirmed, solid, concrete lump. There's been shifts and evolutions where, and you can see my hands are moving. There's been greater fluidity, moments of space, but then still the lovers remain until gradually things have eased and opened up. And that's required a real mental balance to go through the, through this process. And that, that's something that TWIM is completely, it's completely integrated in this process. Without the mental balance, the equilibrium and the sense of loving kindness, but not just that, the, the space that you can create around something intense that's in, held in the physical body, it will feel, yeah, you need, you need that to be able to go through the, through the process. So healing, physically strengthening and cleaning, confirm, confirmatorily of a whole teaching approach. Really exciting that you can bring this into your daily life, that your body is moving around with you. You've got this early warning system. You can start to use it in your interactions with other people. And then I think the, the other aspect is what we wanted to particularly teach you today is how you use it for sitting. Nice to be able to move in your body, to be, have a healthy self-esteem. I don't mean a vain practice, but something where you're taking care. All of this is really good. But sitting is also something where we're, we need our body to be static. We don't want it to be static and welded and stuck and contained and controlled. We want it to be effortlessly expansive, inwardly supportive, so that a meditation can flow. And there's a sense of grounded support. So you've got a nice, nice foundation. And I like to meditate by coming in through the body so that I'm not in a, I'm not in a hurry for my meditation. I'm relaxing into my sit bones. I'm aware of, I'm aware of my sense of being human in a physical body, that I've got this connection with my natural surroundings, that I feel, yeah, the sit bones can drop. Tension can release. I'm all right. I'm going to do a loving kindness meditation. Here I am in my body. My shoulders can relax. My spine can lengthen up. Hmm, this is good. And then I gradually withdraw my senses. And I like to do it through a bit of movement, a bit of spiraling. So I'm encouraging my spine. I think I might be, Hugh might be wanting to take over at this point. But it's a gradual moving into stillness. So that I'm gradually coming out of the external world into my internal world. And this feels very nurturing and, and natural. And I think this is what's, yeah, a lovely reflection on the practice as a whole, whether you look, look at it as a pure movement practice or a pure meditation practice, or you make no distinction between the two. This is about a natural inquiry. It's returning to a natural state of being, really present, really connected, and, and growing what's sustainable within us, fortifying, really, yeah, really kind-hearted. These are, these are, this is a good place to be. So I've done a lot of talking there, probably more than I intended. I think it would be good to, do you want to say a little bit more about energetic support? Because this is very important in terms of how Hugh has brought these amazing principles of TWIM and the Buddhist teaching with yogic principles together. So I'm going to let him take over.
Okay. So one of the key things around Bhante's teaching is this important relationship we need to have with tension. And we really need to allow that tension to come out of the mind, come out of the body. But our traditional way of using our body is to use tension for support, to hold ourselves up. And one of the things that yoga can teach us is that there's another way of working with our body, another way of working with our mind, which allows us to have support without this tension. And this is connecting through to the energetic body. And if you've been on a retreat with Sister Kema, Sister Kema will sometimes describe this energy going up the spine and down and around as part of, as part of her description around how to sit and how to, to work with the meditation. And this is also an important part. If we can cultivate this sense of energetic support within us, then we can let the rest of the physical body relax. And with it, we can keep the mind spacious and open. And then what we have is a body which is energetically supported. And then we can move from this energetic center, which then creates the movement in our body. And we can move without there being a sense of tension. So we get this sense of lightness, softness. We get this release. You know, if you listen to Sister Kema's introduction to the talk this week, she was talking about how as we go through the rupa jhanas, there's this progressive release of tension and the body starts to disappear. And that's the experience in the yoga. The, you know, when you work energetically in the yoga, the things that you feel are the contact, phas, contact with the floor, this is our foundation, contact through the breath, contact through generating this energetic presence. And that's about it. So that the body moves and flows without this sense of being my body, without it being a, a description of what I'm doing. And when we really connect to this energetic movement, it's like, wow, how did the body move? Who's doing this? Rather than owning the shape and the form and all the things that we're doing. So rather than cultivating a, an attachment to what our body's doing, when we work through the energetic body, we actually cultivate a detachment from the physical body. Because that's what allows it to flow. And when we see it flowing, then we realize that actually we don't want to have this attachment to the physical body because the body becomes heavy and stiff and tight and awkward and exhausting. And when we work energetically, it's the opposite of that.
And so this is, I just want to interject here, this is where the work is. It's not creating the outward shape. It's in the, it's in the six Rs, basically. It's what you're catching as you're moving, the movements of mind. But your body gives you a feedback because it goes tense when you come out of listening, when you come out of balance. And then that's reflected in the body feeling denser and the transparency disappears. So it's very, very dynamic and interesting. Yeah.
And so first of all, we're just going to introduce this energetic core, this energetic presence in the body. And for men, this is a, an awareness in the perineum in the body. So the, right down at the base of the spine, in front of the spine, muscle group there. This is where the, this energetic center is for men. And for women, it's a little bit further up the body, behind, just below the navel, a little bit deeper in the body. And being aware here, it's not a holding, it's not a gripping, it's a soft awareness. And when we allow that soft awareness to be there, we can begin to relax the body and it doesn't collapse. So I'm going to ask Sarah to take you through a few warm-up movements and to begin to cultivate an experience of this. And then I'll come in and do some, some standing work with you and see how we go.
Okay, so I, as I can't see you all, I don't know how you're set up if you're on chairs or if you're sitting down. So I'll do, I'll stay on the floor, but do what is appropriate for you. And you can be kneeling like me, or you can have your legs out, or obviously stay sitting on your chair. My body's just opened up to be able to sit cross-legged. I think I started yoga looking like this. I'll show you from the side. Like this, really, really compact spine and rounded shoulders. So, don't worry. Whatever, whatever you find is, is part of, is part of the process of the exploration. So we're going to start by having a really nice jiggle. And I also like to teach children and they love the jiggling and wriggling. So we'll all be children for a minute. Just have a little wriggle and shuffle around on your sit bones. And then as you breathe out, let your body really relax down. You want to feel these sit bones dropping. And a Tai Chi class, actually, I joined recently. They talked about letting yourself feel as though you're sinking into a warm bath. It's that kind of relaxing and releasing you want to feel. Okay. Then we're going to breathe in and follow our center forward. So you feel your whole spine open up, up to the crown of your head. And then breathe out, lightly draw your center back in. We're going to create the gentle rocking through the body, breathing in and out. And you can let your neck and head move all on the top. So it's much more, in the way Hugh and I teach, that your body follows the movement. You're not trying to control things to happen. You're allowing things to take their natural course. Now, you'll often see me teaching with my eyes closed. So you can soften your gaze. We'll totally close your eyes now, breathing in and out. Start to feel the natural length of your body, the sense of widening across your pelvis, across your heart, your ribs expanding. And feel the sense of wide dimension of your breath, moving all the way up and down the length of your spine, down to your fingers, down to your toes. You're developing a awareness, greater spaciousness. And then back to a neutral spine. I'm going to circle here. You see, you've got my, I've got my hands on my, on my, just above my knees. And then back around in the other direction. So I like to think of this as a really cleaning and sweeping out movement. So we're looking after our home now. Letting our neck and head release, inviting any gross level tension to drain and drop out of our bodies. Breathing in and out. Keep your awareness in your sit bones. You need to stay rooted down into the ground as you begin to feel the sense of fluidity through your joints, through your muscles. Same with the awareness of your breath and relaxing inside your mind. I want to lift the corners of your eyes, the corners of your mouth. Tune you into the sense of smiling. And then gradually draw these circles, closer and closer in. And then, see that movement pattern in your body, up to the crown of your head. And just follow it with your neck and head, over to one side. And then inhale back to center, circle. And then inhale back to centre, circle. See that spiral all the way high and relax your neck and head to the other side. And then we're going to draw into our spine and let our neck and head release down and away. Breathing in and out. So you're starting to see how a neck roll that you might think would only be moving the neck and the head, actually, when you lift them more subtly, is a movement that comes from much deeper in your body. In fact, the whole of your torso is involved. And if you're holding on, the shoulders aren't going to release, your ribs aren't going to move. In fact, your body's going to be really tense. So allow everything to flow together. And then we're going to end up with the neck and head dropping down low and then expand away from the spine, nice big breath in, let the neck and head drop back. Exhale, draw your centre in and let your spine release. Breathing in and out. And again, listen for that sense of opening. And then relax. Breathing in and out. Now, I like to also bring to mind with my breath this sense of invigoration in the body. Take a new breath in, new life, the body opens. As you breathe out, you're relaxing, inviting the tension to drop. And smile on the inhale and smile on the exhale, relax. Breathing in and out. Now, we're going to roll up into our shoulders. So this is another part of the body that we're often holding on in, particularly if you do any work with computers. So it's nice to feel that sense of rotation through the shoulders. And then we're going to reverse the direction. And again, too, allow the movement to come from low down in your body up high. Exhale, breathing in and out. So you want to feel the ribs involved, the heart. Okay, good. And then let the shoulders drop. Shake everything out again. Now exhale, release all the lesser semi-tension. And then drop down into the ground. And then interlock your hands together. Now, we're going to expand away from our spine, follow that length, all the way up through your fingers. Exhale, widen and then draw into your spine. And then once more, feel your sit bones, follow that length, be light through your fingers. Exhale, widen and draw back in. So here we're listening for a sense of inner structure. It's also guiding us into this experience of space. Usually, our awareness tends to be focused on the externals. But here we want to feel an embodied awareness of grounded, being grounded, fluid and light, all at the same time. Exhale, one more like this. And then leave your arms wide. And then draw your centre lightly into your spine, let the fingertips drop. Breathing in and out. Softly smile. And allow your centre to create this support. So here we're really accessing, invigorating that sense of space between the shoulders, allowing our heart to have its place. Exhale. Now, if we're too outwardly focused, we'll be doing this movement, holding the shoulders up. And we're looking for something that's more intuitive. And this is what the energetic support is that Hugh was talking about earlier, a lengthening up the front of the spine, of being aware of this sense of width internally. Exhale. Okay. And then release, re-circle. Feel that fluidity in your shoulders. Softly smile. Okay. So now we're going to work with a twist. Remembering what we did with the neck and the head. It's a movement you follow from your centre. As you breathe in, expand up your torso. Sometimes I like to work with my own hands to feel the space in the ribs. And then exhale, you're going to twist from your centre and let your upper body follow the movement. And then inhale back and exhale, release to the other side. And then breathing in, back to centre, ease out. We're going to do a forward bend, lengthen as you breathe in. Exhale, draw your centre in as you breathe out, relax your body forward, circle here. So this you can also do on a chair. So you need to learn to fine-tune your awareness to see either when your mind wandered off somewhere else or that there are aspects within your body that you're enjoying or aspects that you're feeling pretty aversive to. Inhale, expand away, roll up through your shoulders. If you're sitting down like me, or actually you can find the back of a chair, bring the fingertips behind and now expand away from your spine, let your neck and head drop back. Now, only if you're on the ground, it feels appropriate. You can keep expanding and let the body rise up. Exhale, lower. And then drawing in. Now, you have to be on the ground for this because I'm going to show you a cat cow. So if you're on a chair, you can just watch this. Knees underneath your hips, wrists underneath your shoulders. Now, let your abdomen sink. So our practice is not about an overtoning or an over-controlling. So you're allowed a soft abdomen. Then you're going to expand to the side, let the hips follow. Breathing in and out. Softly smile. So this movement is really nice for freeing up your spine. And obviously, when you go sit for extended periods of meditation, you want a spine that's able to feel released and relaxed. So try taking a full circle up and over. Relax your elbows. Be curious, where are your patterns of holding? It's really interesting that movement can tune us into strange places our body's holding on. We're inviting this circular movement. Sometimes you find the calf's gone tight, one shoulder is unevenly tense. What's going on? We didn't ask it to tense up, but yet it's done so all the same. And this is where you soften, smile, relax around the tension inside your head, relax around the tension in your body. And then reconnect with this inner support and move from here. So you can take a few figures of eight. So I like to figure of eight, moving up the body, down towards the sit bones, one way. And then also horizontally, side to side. Remember to breathe, nice long deep breath, change direction. And also working on the vertical, so looping up to the sky and down to the ground. And these movements really start to show you where there's not a sense of relief, what's holding on. Okay. And then back to a neutral spine. So now we're going to play with feeling the left leg on the ground and take the weight out of the right. Now, we're going to draw our centre in and let the leg come in. And then I want you to feel a sense of expansion through the leg, all the way into the toes. It's a bit like if you pour out of a jug of water and you fill up a glass and then expand up the front of your body, out through your fingers. And then exhale, lower. And swap sides, but join the left leg in and then expand away. And then exhale. Okay. We're going to look a little bit more at our shoulders now. So looking at our shoulders through our centre. So in fact, the shoulders can down tools here. You're going to have an awareness of your centre, drawing to the side and releasing your right shoulder underneath. And then breathing in, come back and breathing out. And then you can repeat this quite slowly. I'm going to demonstrate what it means to move energetically. You can speed right up, keeping your mind really relaxed, and your body completely soft. And then back to centre. And so that's an example of working not with strength, not pulling my shoulders through, relaxed mind, energetic movement. And everything's in balance and I'm not even out of breath. So then bring the knees together. And then take the weight out of one side. And then we're going to follow our centre to the side and let the knee come high. Exhale. Breathing in, other side and out. So this is to help you find freedom in your hips. Because if you're sitting for a long time, the legs straight out in front, the hips will be quite closed. So this is to help your body find a sense of balance through the hip joints. Okay. So once you've done that a few times, you start to feel that as the body rises, the knee rises, there's a lengthening on the diagonals, an internal length up to the shoulder. So again, you follow that movement and your arm can float. Exhale, draw back in, let your body release. Now, if you're really listening, this becomes an expression of balance rather than control. Exhale, draw back in. Try that a couple more times. And of course, this is interesting because when you first start it, if your mind's awareness is not in the hand and the leg on the ground and you're not listening internally, this kind of thing will be going on. You'll be all over the place, trying to force a shape rather than relax your mind and listen to your natural expression of balance. So then yoga becomes an external framework, giving you feedback of how, how your mind is not, it's not present, it's not relaxed, it's not open, it's not smiling. So it's a very helpful external way of giving you this, yeah, giving you this feedback of what balance is and what balance isn't. Okay. So we're going to do one classic yoga posture here. We've done a lot of experimental warm-ups. Ease out your shoulders, draw your centre up and back. And this one is down dog. It's quite helpful to look at this because often you see yoga poses where there's a lot of strength here in the upper body. And maybe people are encouraged to have straight legs, which throws their weight forward and actually you've got a balance totally unbalanced. So you want to bend your knees and listen to this inner support drawing into your spine. And then you can see that my arms are completely lying free. And this is where you start to have this feeling of more transparency in your body. It might be that when you begin, your knees need to be really quite bent. But what we're looking for is a spine that's open and free. This is the spine that you want to cultivate for a sitting practice. Relax, open, inwardly supported. And then bend your knees, look up. So you can take one big step forward or lots of small steps. And then exhale, shake out your shoulders. Now, to come up, soft knee. You like to rotate our inner thighs. And then breathing in, follow your centre forward and open up and exhale. And then lightly circle here. So I'm going to hand over to Hugh now, just with one last comment about this, the sense of freedom. We like to do a lot of circling here. And a lot of yoga movement is really quite linear. And if it remains in its linearity, it loses its natural expression. And so for me, what's very important is the sense of discipline. And you get a disciplined structure with the linear movement. But it's not to be at the expense of the fluidity in the listening. That's why we like to do a lot of this kind of movement, easing out joints, relaxing tension. So over to you, Hugh. Thank you for staying with me. Okay, so here's Hugh.
Okay, well, thank you, Sarah. Okay. So one of the things that we often look at on a retreat with Bandi is the different postures of meditation, standing, sitting, lying down. So, and walking meditation. So one of the things we want to explore here is taking forward what Sarah was describing about a soft body and keeping it light, keeping it free, but allowing it to stand without tension. So one of the things we want to do is bring our attention into our feet. Feel the feet on the floor, feel the sense of contact. So close your eyes for a moment and allow yourself to feel the earth itself. That supporting rebound coming from the earth, which keeps us in contact. And then I want you to relax the back of your knees. And I want you to gently rotate your inner thighs, just a little bit, just a soft rotation inward, just enough to take the tension out of your buttocks and the hips and allow there to feel a sense of space here. Then connect in to this centre that we described earlier. But not with the gripping, just be open. Relax your ribs, let the navel be spacious, let the plexus be spacious, the heart. And allow your body simply to stand. Now, janky smile and relax any tension inside your hair around your brain. Softly close your eyes for a moment. And move this centre of yours forward and back until you find a place where your lower back just expands and opens and frees up. And then keep your awareness behind the navel or in the perineum and allow your body to relax. And maybe you can feel that sense of support. And this is the starting place. But all the standing sequence in the yoga is to find this energetic support in a relaxed body. So now begin to move that centre in a circle. And see if you can allow your heart to stay still. And move the centre all the way around. And maybe you find that there's some stiff parts of your body or clunky bits or straight lines and corners instead of circles. That doesn't matter. If you keep your mind soft and expansive, you can allow your body to move around these feelings of obstruction and limitation in your body. And again, it's kind of like the way we work with the mind in the meditation. When there's a sense of obstruction in the mind, if we push against it or try to get rid of it, then we find that we create that additional tension in the mind and destruction there. So keep your mind soft, keep your mind open. And then come back. Okay. Now, we're going to keep your knees soft, keep our hips free and move the centre into the spine and let the body relax out. See how my spine is not bent? And gently move the centre forward again and back. Let the body relax here. So you're working from this place, release the body, the body's free to move. And move this centre forward again. So we begin to feel the body is soft, light and free. And then our lower back remains spacious here. So there's space here in the back. And then we're going to come down. We're going to come down with tucking our chin in first. So chin comes in. So imagine your spine a bit like a bicycle chain. So you can imagine a bicycle string, chain going around the cob. As the head goes down, the bicycle chain is going over the top. And think of the links that go up rather than the ones that go down. And you feel your spine lengthening as you come down. And then you move your centre forward and the body reverses. So everything's occurring because we're moving from our centre. And we relax the body. Exhale and shake out from the centre again. Now I'll go back again, once more, and allow the body to come down and up. Yes. So we're not lifting our body, we're moving from the centre and the body's moving to keep the centre space in our lower back and spine and to keep us in balance. keep the centre space in our lower back and spine and to keep us in balance. And gently move the centre away. And then we're going to move the centre forward. As we move the centre forward, if we don't release our body, we're going to feel ourselves falling forward. So now move the centre forward and allow your body to begin to release and move the centre back. Now, how soft can you keep your body? Keep the hips free, keep your knees free, keep your shoulders relaxed. As this centre moves forward, the first part of the body to move is the head, not because you're cranking it back.
Not in practice like us, I want you to right away.
So now to draw the centre forward, let the head release and come back. No strength. Now move forward a little bit more and this time, release the back of your heart to the ceiling and gently come back. And back. And now you're going to work with releasing the shoulders. So as you move the centre forward, keep your shoulders relaxed, release the back of your heart. Work from this centre going forward, allow your body to be soft, free. Keep your attention in your feet. And gently bring the body back. Okay, good. So now gently draw the core back and allow your body to come down. And pull away. Good. So now we're going to just move from the centre and move one way and move the other. Make sure it's from the centre. And then gently come back. And I want to compare that to the way we can sometimes move. So have your arms out and this time, think about how far around you can take your arms and come back, and how far around you can come back. And allow yourself to notice the end point and notice what's happening in your mind, in your body and with your breath. So as you go around thinking about it, maybe you feel the spine goes tight and starts to push back and you find yourself holding your breath. And you can feel your mind going tight. Now, come back to the centre and move from this place. And what do you notice about the spine, your breath and your mind? Keep your attention in your feet. So when you move from your centre, from this energetic centre, there's no pushback in the spine. When it hits the edge of tension, the movement stops, but it doesn't, it's not abrupt, it's not tight. When you allow yourself to move from your energetic centre, your breath stays natural and deep. And when you move from this energetic centre, your mind remains soft and spacious. And that's the touchstones for the whole of the yoga practice. So toes together for a moment. And we're going to move the right foot out. Have your right foot in line with the mat, back foot across the mat. Draw your centre forward and allow your arms to come out. Now, move your centre in a horizontal circle and let your knees release. Let your ankles release, let your hips release. Feel your spine releasing and your shoulders. And then move the core a little bit less and a little bit less until it's just kind of vibrating there. And then we're going to move this centre towards the back edge of the mat and allow the body to come out. And notice how the body moves to keep the body in balance, not to make a shape. Doesn't matter how far you come down. But wherever you are, see if you can move the centre in a circle and keep all of the joints relaxed. Your attention is in your back foot. That's the contact that gives us the support. And then turn, look at the front foot and move the centre towards the front and the body comes up without you having to lift it. It's balanced. Come back. Turn your feet the other way and try the other way. So allow us to move. See that if you don't let the body move and you move the centre, you feel the body go tense and then it releases into space. So all of the time, we're moving into space as we go round. Then you can move the centre in a circle. The body is light, it's soft, it's open, it expands, there's no tension in our body. All of the joints are still free at the limit of our posture. And then turn and move that centre forward, come up. And then have your feet parallel. And move the centre in a circle and notice if you keep your hips relaxed and your knees and your ankles, all of the joints are free. And then we're going to draw this centre into our spine and allow the body to come down. So what's really important here is one of Bhante's key teachings, drops, D R O P S S. Don't resist or push, soften and smile. So don't push through the sense of resistance you feel in the body. Keep the mind soft, keep smiling. And then when you're ready, mind in your feet, move the centre forward and allow the body to relax off the floor. Exhale back. Good. And then come back to centre. You're going to have your attention down the left side of your body. And move the centre in a circle and simply allow the right side to move to keep the body in balance. So you're not making a shape with this right leg, you're letting it move because your centre is moving in a circle. And because your centre's moving in a circle, the leg moves to keep the balance. So the body feels still, upright and relaxed. And then work the other side. See if you can feel this in your body. The foot doesn't have to come off the floor, it just depends how much you move your centre and allow the body to relax. So when we're meditating, a thought comes into the mind, if we allow it simply to pass through, the mind stays still. Here, if we allow the body to move to keep the balance, then the body stays still and stable. Excellent. So then draw your centre to the left and release your leg out to the right. Perhaps bring your foot up or against your thigh or on your foot, wherever feels comfortable. Gently rotate your inner thighs, allow this energetic centre to be present. Draw the centre forward and allow your body to release. Now, try not to weld the joints. So if we move the core in a circle, we allow the hip to move and the knee to move to keep the body in balance. So we don't rock from side to side. Exhale now and work the other side. So all the time, we're keeping this attention down the right hand side, that's the side I'll do, just on the foot, inhale, though we're here, and move the core in a circle and you can see my knee is free to move, body's relaxed. And exhale and back down. Good. So toes together, inhale, allow the body to release here to balance. Exhale, draw your centre back and relax your mind as you come down. Inhale, look up. Transfer your attention to your hands. Exhale, step back, inhale onto your knees if you wish. Draw your core away, let the heart open. Exhale. Inhale, and then we're going to tuck our toes under. Exhale, come up and back. Okay, so you saw with Sarah relaxing your hands off the floor here, it creates no tension in the shoulders because the support, the energetic support's coming from your core. So then we bend knees here, listen to our hands. Now, we're going to move the core away from the spine and the heart comes forward and the core comes back and the body comes back. Keep the body soft, keep looking forward. Now, we're going to move the core away and relax the feet, maybe to our hands or maybe further, and allow ourselves to come into a sitting posture. So we've just got a battery. The computer needs to have its battery put on. So allow the body to relax here. So you're going to have your knee centre up. And move the centre in a circle. And as you move the centre forward, allow your spine to release, shoulders relaxed. And then on the exhale, draw the centre in and let the body release forward. Okay, it doesn't matter how far down you come. Move your centre in a circle here and allow your body to relax. And then draw your centre forward and let your body come up. Bring your feet perhaps closer together, but you can still have your knees bent. Draw your centre in and let your body release forward. And then gently draw away. Good. And then place your hands behind you. Now, just be cautious here if you've got any back condition or shoulders. We want to work the core in a circle and let the shoulders release. There's no tension in the shoulders here. And let your hands come back. And then as you draw your centre forward, you feel the body expanding here, but it's not a lift, okay? You're moving the centre forward, the body's opening up and releasing. Okay, now try dropping the inner edge of your shoulder blades to relax around your heart. And then move the centre forward. And as you move the centre forward, the body expands off the floor rather than lift. Exhale and come back. Good. So bend your right leg up. And draw your centre forward so you feel the body long. And then as you breathe out, allow the body to go around. So you've got this gently twist, but you're working from the centre and your heart's open and your shoulders are released. And then inhale back to centre and work the other side. And in back to centre and then bend your knees again and draw your centre in and allow your body to relax. And then draw your centre away. Good. Bring your feet together so your knees are out to the side. Draw your centre forward, allow your body to open up. And then you're going to draw the centre in and just let your body release towards your feet a little. And you'll notice almost immediately, your body has become tight. Okay, it's very common in this posture. Now, this is the edge of tension. If you try to pull yourself further down, you'll notice your mind goes tight, your body goes tight, your temperature in the body begins to rise and your breath loses its freedom. So back off from that edge a little until all of those things disappear. Now, rest on the edge of that tension. Relax the tension inside your head, softly smile. So this is using the six Rs. And then soften around wherever you feel the tension in your body. Let that expand. And maybe the resistant quality of that tension changes, allowing the body to ease through And then gently draw your centre forward and allow your body to come up. Okay, so place your heels close to your elbows and lie down on your back, palms up, shoulder blades relaxed. Have your attention in your feet. Softly rotate your inner thighs, this inward rotation just enough to release the tension in your hips, open up your lower back. Now, be present with this energetic centre, deep behind the navel or a little bit deeper down in the body around the perineum for men. And this is the origin of movement. So don't push with your feet, don't lift your body, but give permission for this energetic centre to expand towards the ceiling and let the body follow. So the body is light, it's soft, it's open. And you can begin to move this core in a circle here and check out if your joints are free. And maybe they're not, in which case you might need to come down a little until you find that freedom. And allow your body to open up and release in this posture. So instead of being a posture of tension, you'll move the body into a position of expansion. And this can expand into further movement. So only if you're familiar with this, if you've done yoga before and you use it in your own practice, you can place your hands by your shoulders, elbows in. And the temptation here is to push through your hands and the shoulders. But we don't need any pushing here at all. All of the work is done from the centre. We're going to expand this centre up towards the ceiling, opening the lower back, not tensing it. So that as we allow that to happen, the body relaxes off the floor with a softness and a lightness. Exhale, come back. As soon as we feel we need to make the shape, the body becomes really heavy and tight. Bring your knees over your chest and gently move core around in a circle and back the other way. And then release your feet to the floor. And you can keep your knees up if that's what's comfortable in your back, or if you would prefer to expand your legs a little more and come down into relaxation here. Have your hands, palms upwards, your shoulder blades relaxed, softly smile. Now, even in this posture, which is the lowest posture in yoga, you can't roll out into another posture here. You still need to find the balance in your body and in your mind. So come into your lower back. Does your lower back feel spacious, open and soft? If it doesn't, then perhaps bring your knees up a little. And then you want to check into your mind. So release the tension around your brain, softly smile, come back to this energetic centre. The energetic centre is our object of attention throughout the practice. This is what we come back to. This, when the mind is released, can be fully expressed in the body. When our mind is tense or on automatic pilot, we can't use the energetic centre for support. The body has gone too tense. So come back and to this energetic centre and explore whether this feels spacious, open, free. Create space around this energetic centre in the body. Gently smile, relax attention inside your head around your brain. Allow your joints to relax, let your muscles soften. As you breathe in, relax the tension inside your head around your brain, softly smile. As you breathe out, do the same. And now simply let go of your breath. Stay with the energetic awareness in your body. Allow the tension around your brain to soften, gently smile. And whenever the spaciousness around this energetic centre closes down, And whenever the spaciousness around this energetic centre closes down or gets a little tight, again, relax the tension in your mind, softly smile, let it expand once more. Relax the tension inside your head around your brain, softly smile. Soften around any tension in your body. Be aware how your mind feels. Be aware how your body feels. Be aware of this energetic centre within you. Take a deliberate breath in and out. Wiggle your toes and wiggle your fingers. And then gently draw your arms around your head and give yourself a mild stretch. Bring your knees up and place your feet on the floor. Gently bring your knees over your chest if it's comfortable to do so and slowly move your core around in a circle. And then gently rock from side to side and slowly roll over and gently sit up. Now, find your energetic centre once more. Allow this to move forward and back until you feel comfortable. And you might need to have your legs up like this. And move the centre forward and back until you feel your lower back open up and release. Now drop the inner edge of your shoulder blades. Feel how your spine lets go. Be aware of the space around your heart. Gently smile. Relax the tension inside your head around your brain. Connect to your breath. And then as you breathe in next time, perhaps say to yourself, may I be well? May I be joyful? May my mind be peaceful and calm? My heart open and accepting? And then as you breathe in a second time, may all of those I shared this evening with be well, be happy, be joyful. May their minds be peaceful and calm? And their hearts open and accepting? And then as you breathe in a third time, may all sentient beings, may they be well, may they be joyful and happy? May their minds be peaceful and calm? And their hearts open and accepting? Thank you very much for joining us today. And we're very happy to yield any questions that you might have.
Yeah, please ask questions if anybody has questions.
Well, I think it's a very good, very good example of using the twin in conjunction with the body. And it seems like everyone was working with it. I didn't see everyone, but I think you did a very, very good job of presenting this. And I'm interested, I really am, you know? And so I think this is a very worthwhile joining together of using the steps in conjunction with the body's centre and the balance internally. Very good.
Yep. Well, thank you very much for that, Sister. I feel it's a very, very helpful and supportive approach, not only for daily life, but for the practice that is you know, spend so much time and effort teaching. And I think the more ways we can integrate that practice into other aspects, it just helps expand its obvious relevance to every aspect of our life.
Very much so. Any other questions?
Any questions?
There are some questions, huh?
Yes, please.
Please go ahead.
I have a question. How do you find your, how do you find your energetic centre?
Ah, yes. Um, this is a very interesting one because the energetic centre has a very interesting property. You benefit from it, but you don't feel it. And that's a very strange concept. In the sense that we know when we feel strong, because we have tension in our body, you know, and we feel this. But when we've actually got this energetic strength in us, the body's so relaxed that there's no obvious physical sensation of this. And it's much easier when we teach this, it's much easier to teach it in pairs because the other person of the pair can feel this support very dramatically. But you don't. Perhaps if you've got time, would you like to just stand up? We'll just do a I'm going to ask Sarah to just simply stand really softly, a bit like a jelly baby. So I'm going to push down on her shoulders and I can push her down, okay? Now I'm going to ask her not to make any difference other than to bring her conscious awareness to the energetic centre, okay? And now I cannot move her down. And yet Sarah's body feels exactly the same as it was before. Soft, relaxed, open.
So this basically kind of balance is taught in martial arts as well.
Yes.
Yeah, it is taught in martial arts, in advanced kicks and flying kicks and things like that. This is exactly the training and inspiring. It's why women can compete with men in Asia where I was in Taiwan. Yeah, this is true.
It is, um, it requires a development of mind to access an energetic awareness in your body. So all the training that all of you are doing through TWIM is developing the property of mind that will enable you to relax within your body. Because you have to be patient. It's a really different training from one of physical strength. And you have to be quiet and allow this to, allow basically it to come into your consciousness. This is part of all of us, is part of being human. And I suppose one of the things we often talk about as well is if ever you look at animals and animal movement, they move with power and grace. They are fluid, they are effortless in their movement. You see it, and I can see someone's got a cat there. Cat's curling up to spring. You see everything gathering in. They're not gathering in their paws and their forearms. They're gathering in from here. So it's a whole body drawing in. And then the spring comes from here, and out they come, super graceful. So animals do this effortlessly. It's just we've all got a development of what sometimes we call first brain, rational mind, all this conceptual stuff. And that has clouded our capacity to simply be present with an energetic presence. So the training is to unpick all of that stuff to come back to what is essential. And so it does take, it does take time. And although it's immediately there. So some people, when we teach them, boom, find it straight away. Some people, two years later, where is my energetic centre? It, it, so we have to also be really, um, it's like, it's like the whole of, a whole of the path and all of your, of your teaching. We have to be very patient with it unfolding and not be in a hurry about things appearing.
I think to pick up what Sarah's saying. I practised a very strength orientated yoga for nearly 20 years. And it was only when I had a back injury, not created by the yoga, but from, from an accident. And I found I couldn't do my yoga from strength. But I did have a strong meditation practice and I did, and I was aware of these energetic centres because they were part of the yoga I was teaching, but they were taught physically and not energetically. And I found that if I worked with them energetically, I could move my body when it was injured, but I couldn't move it physically. And that's where this practice started from, about 12 years ago. And it was about the same time that I first started to work with Banti. And, and the two just came together like this. And in the 12 weeks it took me for my back to recover, I changed the way I talked. And everything is built from there. Yeah.
Is it good? Anyone else have a question? Yeah?
Okay, so.
Can I just ask another one?
Sarah B?
Yes, please.
So if, if, so if you're, if you feel abdominal breathing coming up, if you feel a deep breath coming from your abdomen, would that mean that you have found, is that, is that the centre ring? Is that something that would aid the centre ring?
Um, the deep abdominal breathing. What tends to happen when you're working, working energetically is that the area around the navel tends to be largely static. So what you develop in this form of yoga is diaphragmatic breathing. So the diaphragm drops, the ribs expand, you know, the diaphragmatic breathing, but not what we would call abdominal breathing, like where the abdomen's moving out and moving in in a fairly, you know, defined way. So just by having our attention here stopped, this stays soft, it's not gripped, but it encourages this diaphragmatic breathing. And one of the things that's very helpful around the diaphragmatic breathing is that it triggers a relaxation response in the body as well. And that's because the vagus nerve goes through the diaphragm itself. So that's another aspect of this, this teaching or this, this approach is that we are working away from the sympathetic nervous system and encouraging the parasympathetic nervous system to come back in, into play. So we get this balance in our autonomic nervous system, it's a combination. And Sarah was talking about the first brain. This is very much our logical, rational reasoning brain, works with concepts and ideas. And quite a lot of yogas as taught in the West is often taught from that perspective. We're very shape orientated, we're very structure orientated, alignment orientated. And very linear in our yoga. And this, this approach develops what we call the second brain, the brain of the felt experience. And this is a mind that is soft. It's a, it's a body that listens to the balance in the present moment. It's a, it's a freeing, it's a light response. And you need, you need a balance between the two. It's not that you need, you know, only second brain. Because that would bring its own challenges. But you need a balance between the first and the second brain. We need to come into balance. And a lot of Banti and Sisagina's teaching is all about how do we cultivate balance? How do we bring that sense of equanimity into what we're doing?
Well, you know, the equanimity comes from us leaving. And you said, oh, we are so full of thoughts and preposterous, this always causes a tightness. One time, yeah, and one time I saw a deer who was running and jumped over a car. The car was driving and jumped right over the car and across the road. You know, someone told me something that the deer did not have joints the way we did. And the legs in a deer are muscularly structured without the knee, you know, the middle of the leg coming together. And the hip is not a ball joint. It's all muscular. It's amazing.
Wow.
Yeah, so see, and the deer is not complex thinker. And I wonder if it was as complex as we are, if it could have had the limberness of the muscles to have been able to jump. It was like really amazing. And it's a female, it was a doe, and she just soared over the car and the road to the other side, the other pasture. It was amazing. But my uncle and I talked about that and I think it was because he wasn't a complex thinker. And also, yeah, yeah, and in our society, we want to make everything happen. It's a problem in the meditation. Those who are willing to step back and experiment, investigate, explore what it's like for you not to be there and allow things to happen, they progress very quickly. But yeah.
That's something that's very similar in this. If your, your mind definitely gets in the way of this yoga and you notice it. And so when you allow the energetic to express itself, then we feel this support within the body in a way that doesn't have this interference of this constant dialogue of trying to make a posture happen. And so the postures come out of the practice rather than being constructed by the practice.
Exactly. So I really appreciate all of you being here. Does anyone else have a question before we go?
Get in touch with you, you. Can you hear me?
A little bit louder.
How to get in touch with you, you?
How to get in touch with me?
No, you.
With you?
Website address given at the, in the announcement. And I will also, when I upload the video, I'll put the website address. And I, I can, and also maybe you, can we share your email?
Yes, that's no problem too.
Yeah, so then I can share the email and it will be there with the YouTube, which I'm uploading when I upload it. And I can also mention it over here in the chat. I'll just mention it so you can take it from there all. I'll just mention it so you can take it from there also.
Yeah, if people would like, yeah, sorry, if people would like to explore this practice a little more. I mean, we're based in the UK now, although some of you I met when I was out in Panay. You know, we're happy to schedule a class that's a suitable time for your time periods. So if that's something of interest and you want to explore that, then just let us know. And we'll see if we can put something together.
You know, I thought that the presentation was very good, you. But what I would like you to do is if I send you a picture of what I took because I think that if you took the camera about one foot closer and tilted down a little bit, you didn't need so much of the wall above you. And you were, you guys are, you guys are very tiny, very small, yeah?
I think the difficulty for us sometimes is the fact that, you know, it's having as much of our body inside when we're doing standing poses. That's...
But there was, the whole first presentation she did, I would have liked it much better if I could have seen her.
Ah, okay.
It was like very tiny and maybe you could adjust it when you're doing the standing ups part. But when I look at you, like here, I don't need to see all the wall when she's doing sitting and moving and everything. But I really liked the place that you're doing it. It's a beautiful setup. You did a very good job. The phone number, is the phone number on the announcement, Damagavasi?
No, phone numbers have not given. I think you can contact on email and then get a number.
All right, okay.
So one-on-one conversation that you want to have. Hugh, do you want to share the number or we can, they can email and then on, after on the email, you can share the number.
Okay.
Yeah, share the email now. Drop us a line if you want to and...
And do you have any written brochures on the Sukita Yoga?
Our website has some limited information on this.
We're working on it.
Yes.
Okay.
We're in the process of rewriting, rewriting the website.
I know that one. You do. Okay.
Okay, well, thank you so much for joining. And I think as Damagavasi, Banti Damagavasi said at the start, you know, the idea is a donation basis to help with Banti's travel arrangements. So please discuss with Banti Damagavasi, whatever that is.
So did it say on the announcement what they could do, where they should take care of that, Banti?
In the announcement, I have not put it. I have already shared the links and the details on the group, so everybody has the details.
Okay.
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 Thank you, Hugh, for giving your time and efforts. And we hope that people benefit and we'll also put this on YouTube. And I'll also share the recording link with you. So you can also, in your own way, put it across your Facebook or something like that and share it, okay?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Lovely to meet you.
Thank you.
Yeah. Sadhu. Sadhu, sadhu.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Bye-bye.